Okay, I'm in a call meeting with the owner. We have important to the biolight town of Upton, zoning board appeal meeting tonight. You got one there, you're good. We have two things on the agenda, application of the manhood, if I say that, for a manhood sign for the sign on Donut's, and then we have the application of Route 140 of the realty trust. So if you can start off.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'd like to start off with making a motion to accept the minutes of September 2011. Okay. Of second, should we accept the minutes? So you have to be, okay. All right. All right, let's make that unanimous, okay, before I.
Aye.
Great. And I believe that's what you have, easy as out.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so Amanda, you want to start?
I'm Sean from Viewpoint Simon and I.
Okay, yeah.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sean Lemon from Viewpoint Simon and I, and Amanda is our project manager.
She did the application. So we were asking that you deal with our town.
So what we have there is a Donut's currently being remodeled, and as you probably know, where Donut is in the rebranding stage, so the signs need to change. Currently, there is a wall sign that's a cabinet, we'd like to put up channeling instead. We're matching, we matched the square footage of the existing sign, and we produced the lead eye to match the town in the park, so just a second. And so do you guys have any questions?
They were subjecting complaints.
My big question was the internal.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's internal training, and it's something we don't currently allow in town.
Okay, all right, well, a couple things, like, would you allow a halo lighting? That's what you have to do, that is the darkened light.
So, we normally, in fact, that's the only type we won't allow, the internal.
Yes, we could do a haloed option. I mean, it's basically going on the white background of the building, and we don't need to be done with halo, and it's not an uncommon solution.
My only other question, have you guys done anything with the renovation to deal with the traffic backing up on the drive-through and blocking the main road?
Well, franchisee is here, and I believe you changed the car stack, right? Yeah, but there wasn't a lot we could do, but we've adjusted what we can out of the lot, we're redoing the whole parking area, it's getting pulverized and redone, and then with the, my understanding with the state working on the road, they're doing some stuff out front as well, with the turnpike.
Can you say your name to the record, please?
Neil Faulkner, the owner of Ten Heart Rabbit.
What's the last name?
Faulkner, F-A-U-L-K-N-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And all your lighting will be shining onto your property, not?
Sold down, Washington.
Make sure, because we'll have to be contacted and contacted.
Yes. We didn't have, we did not have any new light.
Are there any others that have any questions or comments or concerns?
We didn't receive any calls or questions.
Let's check to make sure. Do you need to review the motion at this time?
Okay, I'm making a motion that we grant the variance for the sign for Donut's of ten north half of that.
I will second that motion, and I'm making, none has provided that this is not internal shit.
Yep.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeff, go into the pile on sign. Do you guys have issues with pile on sign?
By way of issue?
Yeah, with the wall sign.
There's a size requirement, stuff that you have to meet. There's only size required, you have to meet that, but the, for some reason, it's in there that they don't want internal sign, and I can see where I've seen it, it's nice for the mind, but it's awful not close.
Well, not that I want to zip our hand, but we do have a, we have a proposal of replacement panel, and the panel that's there is currently internally illuminated, that's the pre-stated sign. Now, this would have internal illumination, the existing has internal illumination. Now, what you're looking at here is an opaque phase, adjusted graphics, so I'll make sure we wear that, so we don't go too far.
Where would that sign be located?
It would replace the existing panel, and that's here, and that currently has internal illumination on all its current property. So we could do the same thing with this sign, we could do edge lighting, so the halo illumination versus internal illumination.
Yeah, that's not near the street in any way, but that's.
It's exactly where the existing, it's exactly where the existing panel, which is an internally illuminated panel.
Existing panel.
But it's a shelf vertical sign, so it's not going to, it's not going to go any closer to the road, it's actually going to come in a little bit, same.
Well, that was in fact the, the prior.
Yeah, that's where you discuss the project, the first time I was special, right?
Okay, there is a 20-day appeal period, just so you know, it's on a new catalog of these days. Once that time period has elapsed, the needs will let you know. One thing that's very important to know, that this is a variance, so that has to be recorded according to these, listed. Yeah, we'll give you that innovation on Monday.
Okay. Are totally something, guys?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got to do film for that. Any pleasure?
Thank you, guys, everybody.
Okay, application of Route 140 realty trust. Mr. Chair. Yes, I would like to remove myself on one floor. On one floor, yes. I'm a person, you buy food or happen here. Fortunately. Good night.
Give me one moment, because we're going to set up the screen.
It might be up here, too, if we're. It's the first time we're doing it, so let's try.
It'd be something to think about, but I'd really like to see if we could get maps and stuff like that. Kind of mindset down, like those digital, having to throw all something to a quick slideshow, and then it just makes it.
I think that's what they have, and they're all on the website as well.
It just makes it, it's a big audience, but they can see the standard, or see.
Yeah, if we can get this going, I've got some slides, I'll put plans up for everyone to see and.
Yeah, people, the community likes to know.
Yeah, they're on the website.
So you guys have finally done through the meeting?
No. I was wondering, if you're here. I'll explain the, I will explain the permitting background here, once we get into this.
Mr. Chair, we have to formally declare someone who's in the back of the prison.
Oh, so I formally declare. Finally, the role he's been providing for us. Are you Paul?
Yeah.
Paul, okay.
Yeah, in person, as opposed to on the.
Right, right.
Yes.
Sitting here.
That always is actually, it's a great, we had a couple times.
Right.
The mom's on this, this is a little.
I think, let's go with the PDS.
Can I turn this over to you guys, sitting here? So, and let me, that's doing that, and let me see what I'm supposed to do here, I'm supposed to put in bread, whenever you're going to open.
If it would work better for you folks, if it doesn't, you know, I would invite you to sit over this way, if you want to see.
Would you open this?
It's a small town.
Thank you.
As long as you don't vote, you know.
Because I'm not sitting over there.
Yeah, no, it's a great setup, just give it up. They were saying they can't get the zoom, so maybe there's always just.
Oh, it's a project.
You have to bring in some big couches with pillows and.
Bureaus and maybe some.
Creations.
It's a tire, yeah, it's a tire remote, which works, we've got the share of the screens thing pretty well, I'll figure it out, I don't know why this one's.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with this, and if the residents want to just, currency, you can see this, I'll get out of the way, and I'll take that.
Oh, 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 there's some light.
I apologize, this is our first meeting, using this technology up there.
All right, we need a T-shirt.
I was just thinking, my phone girl was here.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, maybe grab your phone, and it's up there.
I don't know why, it's supposed to be, it's up here, it's supposed to be up there as well, but that was.
Oh, there's one.
Did they tell you what the footage is supposed to be on?
Um, no.
Okay, you'd almost have to go through each one.
Yeah, I just came up the other day.
My idea is I had a remote control thing for two different families on the same porch, and the lights were.
Something up there, but I don't know why.
So I literally had to walk to the outside of the village, and have someone on the cellphone, because the thing had a range of like 400 watts, and we needed to be out of your range of wanting.
I think of Netflix, we can watch Amazon, and we can.
Yeah, you had a screen, and then a lot of people, there you go, change it, go over to.
You're going to want to come over there, here, that's the only screen.
Come back to that same one, and just try.
It's technically, it's technically a computer, this is.
Yeah, right. Or is that smart cast controlling all these?
It could be, it certainly could be a cast, because it's all ours.
Same one.
Something to go with the smart cast.
I'll just keep it in box, or maybe we can get something.
Keep trying.
Oh, it's thinking.
Yeah, that does.
That's the promise.
Guaranteed.
Cheese disease.
I think she's going to be streaming Netflix here.
Yeah, right.
Except for all cookies.
It's just an idea, if we can get them.
We may just have to go up here.
Can you get it on the big one? The big one, we've got it.
Um.
That might be just with the.
Looking a little bit, that's the same.
I'll get the mouse.
I'm going to go to the.
All right, we'll leave it on the big one.
Give this.
Let me just give this.
All the chefs.
Right, it's not, it's slush. What's the box? There's further away, so that's even worse for you.
Yeah, so you have to. It is for us.
Yeah, because the computer's over behind you, that's working with.
You move it a little, and it shoots out.
They hesitate to turn the lights off, but, yeah, you better, is it okay when we want?
It's very bright.
Okay. Feel free, feel free to come in and photograph if you need to.
And is this actually something?
It is. Now it's not blocking the view anymore.
There you go.
Yeah, we need, need film.
All right, not perfect, but, are we nearing open, are we good to go?
Yep, we're in, we're all.
Okay, thank you, my name is Jeff Roloff, I'm outside counsel to the factory companies and the affiliated company that's the applicant for this project, Sean Malone with Oak Consulting Group, project engineer. I've got a slide presentation, but feel free to interrupt at any time, we're going to, this is the first time, I think, that we've presented this project to the zoning board, and I think, I don't know if the residents have watched some of the other meetings by Zoom, but we're going to go slow, if it's okay, take our time, interrupt me if you want to talk about any aspect of this. All right. Just going to be a little tricky. All right, I'll get us oriented to the project site first, I'll give you some background related to the history of previous development efforts for this property and more recent efforts, an overview of the project that we're currently proposing, and we'll talk about our coordination and the permitting that needs to be done for this project before the other boards in town. So, the property is heading down Milford Street, towards Milford, the locus of up to Milford Street, it backs up to the railroad, it's mostly wooden, as you can see from that aerial, 66 acres of land.
It looks like it's.
Is it drying? Do you see it spinning? I am real worse. All right, sorry. So with respect to the zoning for this property, the general business zone, 300-foot parallel line from Milford Street in the pink, the SRC residential zone to the rear, the, which extends back to the railroad easement, to the south is the commercial and industrial zone, which I want to point out, because the Regional Planning Commission has identified that as a priority development area, the master plan for Upton also talks about this area, currently underutilized, in part because there's no infrastructure, water or sewer that extends down into that area of town. Driving north on Milford Street, you're all probably familiar with this operation here, this is on the southern end of our property, so if you go north past this building, all of the property we're talking about is on the left side, the west side. Development scenario, so the history here goes way back to 2003, maybe even before then, but I first got involved back in 2003, when Factory was proposing a 59-lot single-family subdivision, traditional subdivision, large parcels, single-family homes, we went into the planning board with the subdivision plan, they had some issues with it, and ultimately constructively approved, they rescinded their approval, we went to court, and after a few years of litigation, the court agreed with us that the, that that plan had been constructively approved. We also were in appeal proceedings with the Conservation Commission and the NICE DEP for several years, related to the impacts of this development on all these resource areas that you can see at the perimeter. And you can see, this development was very expansive, so all of these points where the project grading and everything was close to these wetlands, that was the focus of those appeals, ultimately, we secured the wetlands permit that we needed to build this project. It took years to get those approvals, and in the end, given the market conditions, the project never went forward. So right now, we're proposing something totally different, but I wanted to give you that history, because we think what we're proposing now is significantly, is a significant improvement over what was, what we had secured permits for previously. So what's driving our new concept, which I'll get to in a minute, Upton's master plan of 2005, Upton's housing production plan, which calls for increased diversity of housing, as you know, Upton is currently primarily single-family homes, there's a desire in town, based on those documents and our discussions with the planning board, for more moderately priced housing, and a variety of housing, so that first-time homebuyers, kids that grew up in Upton, or just people moving to Upton, first-time homebuyers can get into the market, older people looking to stay in Upton and not get priced out, so there's a strong demand that we see for senior housing here, there's really no demand that we've seen at any point in time since 2003 for commercial buildings in that general business zone, and just generally, our project is being driven by smart growth principles of protecting more open space, and trying to get more housing units into a smaller footprint, so we're not taking up and consuming more land than what's needed for the number of housing units. Planning efforts so far, so, as you can see, since 2003, my client has considered single-family development here, at one point, we went to the planning board and talked about trying to amend the zoning to have townhomes built throughout both of the zones, that would have required a zoning change, and the planning board basically said, we're not interested in changing our zoning, do something that complies with our zoning. We talked to them about doing townhomes in the GV zone and single-family in the rear, and ultimately, after a lot of work with them, we came up with the project we're proposing tonight, which is townhouses in the front, and then senior housing in the back. In 2017, we went to the planning board, we actually went to them in 2017 for just informal discussions, and then we submitted a formal pre-application submittal, which is a process that is required for the senior housing element of this project, but they reviewed both aspects of the project, there was a period done during that process, as well as a traffic study, we also went to the Conservation Commission in 2019 to confirm the key resource areas on and adjacent to the property, that led us to identifying a verma pool in an area that had previously been identified. After we came out of the pre-application process with the planning board, we were ready to start the application process, but we wanted to talk to the town about the water and sewer, and we're going to talk about this later this evening, but there's a decision to be made as to whether or not the water and sewer for this project should run along the route that we've secured the rights for through the railroad easement, we've got an easement that we've had for many years, and then cross-country to our project site, the town during the pre-app process with the planning board has a really strong preference for running these utilities at Milford Street, so we'll talk about those options later tonight, but we went to the selectmen, and we talked to them about how we could make that happen, and how we could work together to make that happen, and the message we got back from them was, we're not really in a position to talk to you about the sewer and water infrastructure for projects that haven't yet been reviewed by the boards, why don't you go to the boards first, and once you get going with the boards, then let's revisit this conversation. So, it took us a while to do the engineering required to put the plan applications together, but we've now submitted, you know, the applications we need for the permits for this project from the zoning board and the planning board. Sorry. Okay. So in 2019, when we came out of the pre-application process, this is what the project looked like, and it looks pretty similar now, but I just wanted to highlight a couple changes, just so that you understand, and we have been trying to constantly improve the, to approve the concept that we came out of the pre-application process with. So, generally, what we had talked to them about was senior housing project in the rear area of the property, Milford Street's at the bottom now, we've changed the orientation of the plans, 110 units, provide 19 acres of open space, eight offset affordable units, that senior housing component requires a special permit from the planning board. In the front district, the GV zone, we were proposing townhomes, but the townhomes we presented at that time involved 48 units, and they were these quadplex buildings that Factory's been building up in Ashland, the planning board, Derek, didn't like those buildings, so when we came out of the pre-app process, I don't think we changed them during that process, but the plans that you see before you now involve different townhomes, they're smaller, and they're more consistent with the character of Upton, so we'll get to that. Combined, that previous project had 158 units. So the current project is being proposed, I'm just going to run through it quickly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Sean to discuss how we, sort of what he was thinking about when he designed this project, and provide an overview of it. Same number of units, we're now, we consolidated the footprint and the limit of clearing, we're able to protect more open space, we're now proposing to protect 22.8 acres of open space, which is more than 30% of the property, in addition to the 100-foot perimeter buffer, which has to go all the way around the senior housing project, that's one of the zoning biolight requirements, we're still proposing eight offset affordable units, the senior housing project is going to be the subject of the planning board's special permit process, that process is scheduled to start on December 14th, everyone who received notices for this hearing will receive notices for that, December 14th is the planning board hearing. The application for this board is the townhouse development within the general business zone, and so we're asking for a special permit from the zoning board to allow that part of the project. The number of units has been reduced from 48 units to 34, and again, we've changed the architectural design, and I'll get to those in a few minutes, but I think what I'd like to do is just, this is the overall site layout plan, and I think with reference to that, I'll let Sean just give you an overview of the project, and sort of what some of the thinking was, I'd like to.
Sure.
And, if I may, you see the word here, I want to just talk about the existing site a little bit before I go to the layout. So, as Jeff mentioned, about 3 acres on Milford Street, gives some orientation, town is this way, here's the rug guy, and this is the railroad back here, with the railroad street and the station street beyond that. The site is entirely wooded, undeveloped at this time, there's a large wetland system over in the southern portion here, as well as a smaller system to the northwest, and then a couple to the north that flow to a stream beyond that goes under the railroad. In 2019, we're before the Conservation Commission for an RAD, we created notice of resource area litigation, they reviewed the wetlands on-site to confirm what we're seeing, and during that process, a pocket verma pool was also discovered on the site. So the OBRAD was issued, I believe, in May of 2019, so all the wetlands that we have on the site that we used to design the project have been confirmed by the Conservation Commission moving forward. In the summer, in July, we did about 17 test pits throughout the site, just to give an idea of where we can do stormwater manut, and what we're looking at, and generally speaking, and something that is going to be obvious to you by living out there and driving by, but the front portion of the site, there is some shallow ledge to contend with, the back portion of the site had pretty good soils, had sandy looms there, so the other component that we looked at during the site layout is, there's kind of a ridge through the middle here, you can tell by the topography how it's a little steeper, so this area is the flattest area of the site, so we wanted to prioritize that, with the exception of the area around the verma pool for the development, and then we get a little bit more flatter areas back here, and over in this site, as well as over next to the rug guy. So those were the areas that we were looking at, I can jump back to the big screen here, that's okay?
The wheel works better than the mouse.
The wheel, okay, but I want to just try a little. Okay, so this is the proposed development Jeff talked about, this is the zone line, this heavy dash line here, so everything to page down of that is the townhouse portion of the project that we're primarily talking about, and then to the rear is the senior housing development. We have a total of three curb cuts proposed, the first being down by the rug guy for the smaller pod and the local land down in that area. With the rug guy, is that okay to call the? With the rug guy, is that okay to call the guy?
He's definitely a person.
He prefers it. I'm not going to.
Just call him what his name is.
So these curb cuts were locations very specifically chosen basically due to sightlines for traffic safety. So this first one would come out across some of the rug guy's property, basically to where his entrance is now. And this would be eight units. And then the main entrance would be at the center of the site. This is kind of where there's a rise in 140. And then the secondary egress entrance would be just about the north of that. So with the townhouse project, we're basically looking at kind of three pods. The eight units here, the 14 units here, the 12 units here. And then proceeding to the back, this is the senior development. And this is that ridge area I was pointing out on the existing condition. So we tried to focus the development in those more buildable areas. Then we come down the slope along the base of the sloped area on the uphill side of the wetlands. Small cul-de-sac in the flat area here and back out. We've tried to condense the site as much as possible to respect the buffers to the wetlands. We do have some encroachments into the 100-foot buffer. So we won't be before the conservation commission with a notice of intent. But we wanted to talk with you folks, talk to the planning board, and kind of get the layout set before we go down go down that road. The roadway has been kind of conceived and designed to be more of a traditional neighborhood type layout with the street trees. We'll have site lighting. They do about 300-foot spacing on the site lights. So the idea is to, these are duplex units, but to give it more of a traditional neighborhood feel with the cul-de-sacs and the shorter runs, the curvilinear roadway, rather than just a straightaway. And down here in the townhouse area, the same idea with the cul-de-sac here. This would just be a cul-de-sac and then the smaller pods that would be planted with the street trees. Now, when you're, we're going to get some more information on this and hopefully some renderings. But when you're coming down the roadway, these areas will be elevated slightly from the roadway area as well as buffered. We put natural and new vegetation as grading and ledge provide for. We, as I mentioned, we did the test pits for the stormwater design. So we have completed and submitted a stormwater management study documenting the compliance with this site and stormwater management system with the EDP regulations. We're using several different infiltration ponds in the rear. Here. And one here. And then in the front, where there's more shallow ledge, we have a detention pond and also some stormwater treatment units in addition to the deep-sump catch basins. We'll also be transmitting water with some stone line swales at the base of this slope. Because of the topography, we will be having some fairly significant, I would say, walls. And this area would likely be a ledge cut. So we have high elevation and then low elevation here. So these areas here, we're anticipating to be a ledge cut on the order of 10 to 20 feet. And then similarly, on the downslope side would be a retaining wall of similar height here and here. The overall design meets the, as I said, the stormwater requirements for stormwater treatment as well as the flow offsites. We're not increasing flow offsite. And the last component we can get into is the utilities. And Jeff, do you have a specific slide for that?
Well, you're talking about sewer water?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hold off on that. We'll get to that then. It's a big component and it's a topic of discussion that's likely to. Let me get through a couple other sort of project-related details and we'll turn back to it. Okay. So, let's see. There we go. All right, so just focusing in on the general business zone, which is the zone, the townhouse part of the development. The top is what we presented at the planning board with those four plexes I mentioned. Currently, we're proposing these these completely different designed townhomes. And I'm going to show you a little bit of the architecture there, but I just wanted to point out, what you're seeing here are actually triplex buildings. So these three units, for example, are one building with a shared foundation wall. And these are just a series of triplexes. And then there's two duplexes, one here and one there. These triplexes are, I'm sorry, I sort of got away from the architectural, I'll get back to it. These are the buffer zone impacts. So as Sean mentioned, some of the grading work and other work will be sort of extending partly into the wellings buffer zones. So that'll promise to go to the conservation commission. But for a project of this size with so much wetland resources around it, these buffer zone impacts are negligible and easy to manage, we think. I have this grading plan in here in case you wanted to refer to it, Sean. But I'm not going to go through all these details. These details are on the overall site plan in your plan set. And it just goes through the zoning requirements for each of the zones. The SRC zone, the senior housing development summary. And then for your focus here, the general business zoning requirements and what's proposed. All right, to the townhouse styles. Again, we've got triplexes that we're proposing. They have a shared foundation wall. I grabbed this image off Google Earth of similar structures that were built in Huxbridge years ago. Queen of Roses, if you wanted to go look. The buildings that were, the units we're proposing are a little bit different. But I wanted to show you, I wanted to show you the concept. So what you have is a triplex building, but this design allows you to have some space in between each of the units. And this is actually a seven-plex building with, again, with some space in between each of the units. Normally, a triplex building, as you know, would have a shared wall and there'd be no light that can come in through the middle. These are images of the unit types that we're proposing. So one of, and in the middle that we provided you, you'll have the architectural details, which I wasn't going to walk through. But I did want to present these photographs of actual buildouts of these units. So this is the Karen Rose unit, the Victoria May unit, and the Elijah unit. And the idea is that you can sort of change features within each of these structures. And we don't want these buildings to look like some sort of uniformed design. It's going to be a variety of designs as you move down the street or with, you know, past the different townhouses. Different colors, different roof lines, but similar sizes. In the senior housing area, most of them are duplexes. Most of what we're proposing there are duplexes. Like, I guess I, this isn't before the zoning board, it's before the planning board. But this does, this is one part of this project that differentiates this development from the other senior housing development that's being permitted right now, which I believe is primarily single-family homes and larger. These are going to be smaller units, primarily duplexes with, I think, 10 single families. In 2019, a traffic study was done, which was important. The traffic counts were taken prior to the the changes in traffic patterns based on the whole pandemic. The data was helpful for evaluating sightlines. And we adjusted the entry points along Milford Street based primarily on the traffic studies. The report is in the package that we gave you. These are just a few of the highlights. You know, 8,000 daily vehicle trips on Milford Street, 700 during the AM peak, 700 during the PM peak, peak hour. The projected traffic associated with these units, on average, one vehicle every five to eight minutes per driveway during the peak hours. So less during the normal non-peak hours. The conclusion that our traffic consultant reached was that this proposed development is anticipated to have no significant impact on the area traffic operations. Sightlines are appropriate. And I'm expecting we'll probably, I don't know if the planning board will want us to have our traffic guy come in, but if traffic is a concern, we could bring him into the planning board.
Just to point out, to make sure I'm clear too. When you said the 8,000, that's the existing.
That's the existing daily. That's correct, perfect. So that's 8,313 daily vehicles were counted both directions on Milford Street during the traffic assessment down in 2019. So negligible amount of traffic compared to the level of traffic on the road. Project benefits, so, you know, these are estimates and I'll show you separately sort of how we came up with these. But residential development is a significant tax revenue source for the town. The impact from these types of residential units, where you're talking about primarily senior homes and then smaller townhouses, don't typically have, well, the senior homes especially, don't have many children associated with them or educational costs associated with them. Townhomes, they're three-bedroom units, smaller. You might get some, but you know, not like you would get if this, if these were four or five-bedroom single-family homes. Again, we're trying to diversify the housing variety. That's consistent with the master plan and the housing production plan. Trying to provide smaller, more affordable units versus the larger single-family homes. Providing offsite affordable units restricted pursuant to state guidelines. We're proposing, we think, a townhome development in the general business zone is just a better value for this area as compared to building, commercial buildings on spec. I might sit there empty because my client doesn't see any demand for commercial space in this area of the GB zone. Try to cluster the development as much as possible and expand the amount of open space to be protected. Significant benefits as compared to a traditional single-family development. And then importantly, and we'll get to it, I keep saying that, but the water sewer infrastructure is a important benefit here because by getting that infrastructure to this location, you're that much closer to the commercial and industrial zone. And then again, that place, that area of town is underutilized primarily because there's no infrastructure there. I won't walk through all this, but the, you know, roughly 600,000 net financial benefit per year associated with the project is laid out in this slide. And by the way, I will, I'll provide a copy of these slides to the board after tonight's meeting. So this is the, I'm going to turn it back to Sean. So he can talk about the two options that we have with respect to bringing water and sewer to the project.
Okay. So as Jeff mentioned, there's two options that we're looking at and our plans show both options. I'll start with our initial option. And that is to utilize an easement that the applicant already owns within the railroad to bring water and sewer from, this is Grove Street and Station Street, through that easement and down into the site here. So this would require the extension of the water line from Grove Street and then the sewer line to the existing pump station on Station Street. We would bring that back into the site and bring it through the site with, it's not shown on this plan, but we would have all gravity sewer into this line here. And then we would have a pump station in this smaller pod that would then pump up through and connect to the gravity system. And we would run the water with this pump system. As we mentioned in our project documents, I'm sure there'll be much more conversation about this, but with this pump station, we would have the ability to size that in a manner to accommodate future flow. Showing in this blue line, this would be coming down from the industrial area. So as Jeff mentioned, right now, the existing water line stops, I think, about here. And there's no sewer. So we would be bringing everything to within, you know, a couple thousand feet maybe to the industrial development area. So we presented this as our option during the preliminary discussions. And the DPW director, Dennis Westgate, called me. And we started the conversation about the possibility of bringing sewer down Milford Street and bringing the water back up Milford Street, creating a new pump station here that then would pump to the existing town gravity sewer downtown, which ultimately is that same pump station, I believe. So we did some additional work. We did a series of borings out there in Milford Street to see where the ledge is. We had some area topography done, some survey work done to kind of get a schematic plan to understand what that would take. So we did those plans. We've, we submitted those to Dennis and Ty and Bonn, the town's engineer, for just some comment. Again, it was very high-level schematic. And they thought there's some, there's some real possibility there. We then had our cost estimators look at both options. And the long and the short of it is, this Milford Street option would be three to four times more costly than the easement option. So that, that's a concern to our client. We talked about some with Dennis and actually with Derek in the select board about potential partnership with the town and maybe there's a way to defray some of these costs. So it's more possible to do this. This without additional help with the town probably makes this infeasible due to cost. So that's kind of where we stand. I don't know if you wanted to add anything on that?
Not yet, but if you go ahead, I think you'll see the profiles and maybe you can just explain sort of one of the challenges with bringing it up Milford Street is the need to blast through all this bedrock, right?
These dark areas here, that's ledge. So that's where we'd be impacting ledge. So aside from just the street opening and the trenching in Milford Street, we're also talking about blasting and hammering, which, you know, obviously adds to costs as well as the time of the project. So that, you know, you can see a little bit more here. This is all ledge. So this is probably, I don't know, four or five-foot ledge. It's probably five to six-foot of ledge cut within the trench.
Yeah, this is just what you just talked about, so I don't think we need to get into anything else there. That just identifies, this is a slide we presented to the selectmen, just explaining to them, you know, it's a million and a half additional to run that route. You know, we had paid for the easement needed to run the cross-country route that we had preferred. Let me see that. I've got another slide.
Yeah, you are kind of moratorium.
Yeah, okay, so we are tuned in. Although we should get an update on this, to DOT's plans to repave Milford Street. So obviously, if we're going to run a sewer line on Milford Street, we want to coordinate that with the state and do it before they do the repave, right? Otherwise, it's just a whole nother layer of work, so. We went to the selectmen with this list of ways, you know, we're not looking for the town to write a check for a million and a half dollars. There's other ways the town can help defray these costs without a cash outlay. There's other ways the town can help defray these costs without a cash outlay. These are some of the things that we suggested, waiving some of the water sewer connection fees. You know, we're proposing currently eight offsite affordable units and as long as we can stick to eight and aren't required to go more than 10, we're sort of taking some credit for that. And that's, that would be a town benefit, we would say, just because the affordable units cost money, obviously. Direct contribution from the town potentially, and the hope there obviously is that that would come from state grants. And obviously now with the infrastructure money that's flowing, the hope is that we can work through town officials, the DPW to tap into some of that to apply towards this part of the project, the utility work. And then, you know, there's always an unknown in terms of what are you going to run into when you start running lines through ledge? And we just want to share sort of the risk that there's something there that, that we're not anticipating right now. But we're, you know, those are discussions that we're going to have with the selectmen. Again, they wanted us to get in front of you first. Sorry, I'm trying to go back up to a slide and it won't let me. I don't know if I need it. I'll just leave there. The slide I wanted to go to though was that while we're in front of the ZVA here for our general business townhome special permit, we've got this application with the planning board for the senior housing special permit and also the definitive subdivision plan that creates the three lots that will accommodate this project collectively. That hearing starts December 14th. We're talking to the selectmen and I talked to Derek today to make sure that he was tuning them back into this process so that we can simultaneously have discussions with them about these sewer and utility options. We will go to the COMCOM as soon as we get some comfort that the general layout that we have is something that the boards feel like they can support. And then we'll have a state legal review, which we don't expect to be much of an issue at all. So there's a lot, a lot more permitting discussions happening beyond the ZVA process here. So I think with that, that's it for the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions and I'm sure the residents have comments.
Yeah, I just have a couple, couple questions if you guys can answer them of course. Just as a dumb question, with perspective to me, what's your unit cost probably, what are you aiming at in terms of townhouse, dual license singles? What's your target price, market rate price?
Price point?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. I need to get an update on that because we did, we did communicate those a couple years ago and then we changed the designs of the building. So I'll, we'll get back to you on that question, but I'm thinking previously we were, we were thinking like 350 a unit or something like that, but you know, that's really rough and I'd like to get a more updated figure on that.
Because obviously something like that, I think the other one, the town, they're aiming at seven, five, eight, five giant monster houses. So that actually impacts.
Right.
About the whole sewer equation, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
My other question is, you mentioned eight offsite affordable units, where are those going to be?
Yeah, so that's a good question and we've done this in other towns. So what we would anticipate there, and the offsite units, by the way, spin out, I think they would typically spin out of the senior housing projects. So what we would expect is for the planning board to impose a condition that allows offsite affordable units to be counted because we get a, there's a density bonus that's associated with that.
They have to be in town, right?
They have to be in town and they have to be, the location and the details of it will be subject to a subsequent review. They would have to be provided at a certain pace as related to the buildout of the project.
Right.
And if we weren't able to find an appropriate site or work out the details of those units offsite, they have to be folded into the project. And they can't be in the senior housing portion of it because of the, the age discrimination issues associated with that. So they would be folded into the townhouse project, yeah.
Are any of the senior units single-story or are they all two-story? That's just something.
Yeah, some, some of the, the, the single family, the ten single family are single-floor, like branched out.
Hey, I'm the municipal board.
I just want to check the board on the short dispute.
Yeah.
A couple of questions. One, just want to make sure we're talking about 34 buildings, your application says 44 and your sewer calculations based on what we're doing to the terms.
For the townhome?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's probably a carryover from our previous proposal, which was actually 48 of them in the second day, but now we're down to 30, 40 units, right Sean?
Yeah, 34 is correct.
Yeah.
Well.
My question is. So our BIBs do have requirements for, for townhouses in other districts. I'm curious as to how, how you compare to those in terms of the parking and landscaping.
Sorry, parking in the open space from landscaping.
The landscaping.
So landscaping, yeah, right.
So the, the parking, we do have, I think, two garage spaces, or no, one garage space and one service space for each unit. And then the landscaping, I know that there is some, I don't recall the specific requirement, but you have to have so much ground cover at the base of the unit and things like that.
Yes, it's about three feet around each residential building except entrances.
Right. So we will get a landscape plan, architect, landscape architect should be clients with that. We will need that requirement.
Okay. And for the parking, you said one, one garage space and one off-street space?
I believe it's one garage space and one surface space. Maybe two. With Derek. No, I stand corrected, I'm sorry. It's two garage spaces and two service spaces per unit. So it's a 20-foot driveway and it's a 20-foot garage.
Okay. Yeah. You guys aren't asking for permission to violate any...
No, no way.
Well, you must be, at least for the sewage, right? Because these requirements require an onsite sewage treatment facility if you're talking about either of the options you're talking about.
I believe if municipal sewer is available, we would be piping to municipal sewer. One way that, we're not proposing any onsite septic system, individual septic systems or anything like that.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so you do need, not leave from that, but the special permit would have to take that into account because by law requires onsite sewage treatment facility for any type of facility if I can add support. I can certainly guarantee that any portion I accept, the Dallas would be for. I'm sure the town would prefer, yeah, the town sewer.
Yeah, I want to clarify that. So you, you might be right, I want to look at that. For some reason, I, I'm, I'm looking at it right now, but I thought I had seen something that got you around the onsite requirement if you were actually connecting, but if I don't find that...
It makes sense.
Then I'll clarify if we're requesting a waiver of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to open the floor up to other people. I just want people to understand, any comments or questions that you can technically go through the chairman of the board.
Okay.
I like a nice quiet, comfortable environment.
If they can state their name as well.
Yes, make sure you state your name and address so that the duties can get that for the minutes. But I don't want to get into, you know, many, energy and vacuum. But anyways, great place to take the time, I'll ask you a question now, offsite.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Hagen. I live right on Milford Street, on the last house on the right before the rug died. So I got a lot of woods behind me. I'm wondering where about is your blasting? Because there's a lot of rock ledge where I am and they staked out all around my backyard this past summer for this, I believe. So I'm wondering how close is it going to be to my home and will the blasting affect me?
So I'm guessing, I'm trying to figure exactly, so here's the rug guy.
And if you come down to the red probably, is that going to be near me now?
You're going down, you're down.
Yeah, I should be down there because it's only three houses on the right, Amity, Gasco.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And on the last one on the right.
Okay. So the blasting would be in this front portion here. So typically, if you're more than 250 feet away, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any effects. And so before we do anything, there'd be a professional blasting company involved, creating a back blasting plan. They would go through the fire department, they'd have to do all this analysis, they'd establish a radius, see if there's any, you know, potential structures that may be at risk that we need to document and take special care. So the, I guess the, the short answer to your question is, no, we don't think that you'll be impacted by any of the blasting that will take place there.
Although you don't hear it, I mean, so they're...
Right, I mean, you hear the fire.
There, there, there will be construction activity.
That's not my problem, I was just worried about the foundation, right on with the blaster.
Yeah. The alternate is they'll use the hammers, but that's actually more annoying. I'd rather have one blast that I've done instead of two months of pounding with the hammers.
And how far in sewer will we have to pay to be connected or will that come with the...
No. It would run down the street if you choose to reconnect.
I would choose to.
Well, I know a lot of people want it, want it in there. The town, I didn't, you can tell me more on this, but the town very often when something like that goes through, would basically allow you to connect and then bill you over a certain amount of time. Is that, does that...
I think that's correct. I think it, I think it runs in front of your house, I think you have to connect, but it's done in such a way they don't have to pay for it all at once.
So how much will it cost us and the...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Not sure. This, I don't know.
Because I can't sell my home in two years, so I don't, I just wonder what's...
I think, I mean, it's a good question for each other, right? Just give them a call and ask them what the requirements are there.
But I would say Dennis over at the DPW, they want their secretary for this great, but it would be a save you, you know, working through the old type of five, but actually two years from now, I would strongly go for this sewer line if it goes in the beginning of two years, would it?
I would hope it would be, actually.
Oh, okay, you're going to go that fast, okay. So that, that would be actually good news for you then.
For me, to call Dennis probably, you know, soon if I know.
Yeah, just how the town, each town is slightly different.
Yeah, I was wondering, is it going to be like monthly? Like when we pay our taxes and...
I started that info.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we will, this is, you know, this is going to happen every day, so we don't have to answer Andy.
We, we certainly find out.
You can certainly, yeah, you can certainly definitely reach out and run, but we will also reach out to DPW to get any answer they might have about that.
But we know historically, they, they never just present you with a fee bill. I mean, you certainly can't pay for it all at once, but we do know a lot of people want sewer.
Yes.
Can we get a little more clarification on that? If you're putting the sewer on Milford Street with the Humpville Street and we have septic and well.
Yeah.
We have to connect to the town and then we have to pay for it? Do you get connected?
That's outside of our purview, but sometimes you're required to have, there would be that would be a negotiation. For Derek, some towns, I don't know, if you're not required to connect if you're adjacent to the sewer, the charge is a little better, I believe. But I do, I'm not sure.
They're really four hundred feet off the street, so...
Yeah, we have a significant hill and ledge.
Yeah. But I'll give you specifically, water runs down High Street, which I live on, I live on, I live up, I was not required to.
Okay, okay.
So that's something, obviously, we're going to have to find.
I know what town I'm in.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know what, this is exactly the sort of question that we want to get. I don't think these guys came before us and I'd expect they'd call this at the approvals to the one line.
Yes, we're really need to understand what that, what that impact is and what they, and now I hear you're talking about costs of, of hooking up, but we have to pay for hooking up to something we don't want to hook up to, but that would be very wrong.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe the other thing is, is there is a, usually when you go hook up to something, there's a fee associated with that. The reason I didn't, my well went dry, the reason I didn't connect with the town is because at the time, the fee to connect, just the permit had gone from $500 to $5,000. And I should put a whole well in for, for two, I think I did for two, five, $2,500. If you're being forced to do this, we can bring it up with Derek as to can we make it that these people don't have to pay the permit fee at five, whatever that is. I can't, it just means I, we have more questions and more research that is actually independent of you guys that we, but that's something we're going to want to find.
And for us specifically, it's 400 feet uphill, so that would probably require our whole driveway getting torn up. So we would need to understand those, you know, if that's getting connected, the impacts of the, the land and, and who pays for, for a new driveway for us, that shouldn't have to be us.
You're talking to the side of the driveway.
It's a, it's a $75,000, $1,000 project for us then.
Can we get your, your name and address, please?
Patrick.
Okay.
Is that all it's here?
Yep. And the address?
82 Milford.
And, and the vote, 80 Milford.
And what's, 78...
I'll know.
You don't have to fill, we know.
It's not fair that for these guys to do something and you guys get, you know, stuck with a hundred thousand.
Right, we certainly can't have one.
But the reality of it is, is, you know, a lot of people really like having, you know, sewer run down there.
It would look like the elastic pipeline going up 140 on our side of the building before we were there and I don't think it would be worth the cost.
And, and we've been talking about running the sewer down Milford Street for at least 10 years.
So that's something I didn't understand, I didn't know that we had to pay.
We'll find that out.
We'll find that out.
It may not be...
Possible.
Stay tuned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for raising that.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eileen Woods, 78 Milford. Mine is actually a two-part question. Talking about the sewer line, does that mean that fire hydrants would be made available? I know that's a concern.
If there's water, there's sewer.
Okay, and...
And, I'm sorry, if there's water, there's fire hydrants, yes.
Okay. And will there be sidewalks running from town up to this development? And regarding the curb cuts, I know that you had, it was a traffic study done, but one point egress is between our house and 76 Milford Street and I can tell you from experience that going out of the driveway and taking a left is a little bit frightening given that, given that the speed limit is 45 miles an hour.
Yeah.
I know that's, the speed limit there is not under your purview because it's a state highway, but has been, consideration been given to lowering the speed limit in that area? Long the distance, sorry.
That was actually going to be my question, so just after that, and given that it's going to be senior housing, that I'm more concerned coming from Milford toward Hutton.
Yeah.
There's that turn right in front of the rug guy's place and there's Amazon trucks going over 45. And if I'm backed up waiting to turn into my driveway because five or six or seven cars are waiting to pull into the development, I'm done. They're going to go right through us. So there's got to be some sort of speed limit or street, street light or something.
I live on High Street, which you want to talk about taking.
No, I know, I see that, so when you, when you did that, we did the same thing.
Yeah.
I don't think, from what I've seen, and you guys can help me out on this, nothing I've seen on any of the plans have a sidewalk going that far. I haven't seen, I've seen it as far up as Gasko.
To the chair, I mean, I know the project specifically is not proposing that, but I think you're referring to the TIP project that's happening with the state resurfacing 140. I, there is, at this point, the existing plan does stop around that point you described, but there have been some discussions, given that the aforementioned rainfall of potential infrastructure money. We've already had conversations with the state of extending on either end of 140 the limits of the proposed project. Don't have the answer of where sidewalk may or may not be, but that's something that's being discussed.
Discuss. I will say that if they just put one on High Street and it's shocking, the amount of walking traffic that's just on High Street now, which was never before. It's amazing once you, people don't fear for life.
There is, there will come, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, concerns, cause we're probably going to have to, uh, continue this anyways.
Yeah, it's a couple more, we talked about sidewalks. Um, one of the other questions is with, and we talked about the costs and the, the tax revenue that could come in related to, and not having, not necessarily too many families, the impact on schools. Have you done an analysis based off of the number of senior housing and what impact that will have on town services, such as the fire department and the EMT? Uh, because, you know, those could be a strain on, on town services as well. Has that cost been part of your analysis?
Uh, no, not that I, it hasn't been part of the spreadsheet that I've seen. So I'll bring that question up and see if we can get some data with that.
I will tell you the town has, uh, from our end of it, we've been talking about it. Uh, in fact, I mean, the story of the new, uh, community center and senior center, that was one of the, uh, linchpins of it, is the fact that we're very aware of, of senior housing. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of units in town if this project can, uh, go to completion. So I, I know that that has been a discussion, um, and on the, uh, ambulance and ambulance run, currently we're running for two. So it has been discussed.
Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that, if I could, I can, I can just for the, for the board, the applicants, the public that are here. Uh, these plans are being circulated to all the various hometown departments, including fire, police, et cetera. So we don't have specific recommendations for them yet. But we're not just, you know, obviously the applicants are presenting information. We do our own analysis and we also hire a third-party, uh, engineer to review the traffic issues. So we don't have any answers to that yet, we don't know what the solutions may be yet. But we can tell you they're, they're, they're being looked at and it'll certainly be discussed in the context of the planning board hearings, that's for sure. And they come back up here as well.
Okay, and then in the reply, it's, it would be, it's kinda hard, probably that diagram is the best one to see, but really try to understand where those entrances are, and the streets are, in relation to this, on one forty. Where, where it's in relation to the driveways, um, and, and in the, in the top corners that we have on one forty.
Would you guys mind filling out a form?
The bottom one, I think I have properties on it.
Yeah, we can try to use this one, this, this one illustrates this parcel. Uh, so there's a home here that then has a side drive that comes down, does that seem accurate to somebody?
Yeah.
A gravel driveway.
Right, so this would be pretty far uphill of where this driveway is. Um, it looks like you're probably, maybe what, twenty feet up then, so, uh, Milford Street. The second drive, the middle drive would be, um, at this juncture here. We're not showing if there's any houses, but right in between two lots.
So this is right blocking where we can be up a couple of floors, in fact, cause we know the, I think this is ours.
We can tell that it's a little bit larger, it's slightly different.
Yeah, but this is covering like that spot where you can tell, I don't know.
Rug guy's down here.
This is, oh, this is, this is you, this is me, this is you guys.
Yeah.
So where's the entrance?
Over here.
So that's between the, the two, you're between that door entrance?
Uh, I don't know that for sure, it's right in the crest of the hill. You're coming up from town, crest, and then you start to go down along.
That's us. Yeah, this is my, this is here, and that's the going, and that's, uh, the, the, so, it's over here. Oh, so the hills, and they're right there, up there, so they can see down the hills and they can, both ways.
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was between us and the hill right there.
We had it at one point, but when we did that sightline analysis and the traffic study, that's where we found where we have to move it because we have to, once again, it's possible.
The hill between left and right, like, you know, just, I don't know, the cost, we're sitting there at zero.
Yeah.
Basically, that's, that's, you have to step on the gas and deal with those, you know, like, yeah. Particularly with her.
See, the last, the last one is just.
Something that, where?
So is this for the people? No, well, there's, there's, so you're taking the rug guys, and you're taking the rug guys?
You would say, oh, one time.
So these guys are more than just, uh?
No, they just say, just the same townhouse development, uh.
We can say portal.
These are, they're the old plans, they're the old plans, they're the old plans, it's over. Uh, so this is what they look like, so they, they are the same type of units.
And the rug guys here.
The rug guys right there.
So yeah, this is also, so.
And if you're not able to contain all of this, it's been a great, you're a parent.
This is the danger.
No, no, this is exactly what townhouse was for. You know, you brought it up, you know?
This is a very, this is a tough one.
Yes, and that's how you try to hold a little bit this way, so here's his entrance, and it's holding a little bit, and there's crest.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was, you said, everybody's, yeah, probably something to do with.
I mean, I come up. What street called the range?
Yeah.
This is one street, so that's still another.
But we come up here, and you can't, and you're coming up here.
No, I, I agree that.
You're like pulling out, and the next thing you know, they're suddenly right behind you. So it's just a very long walk.
Yeah, well, particularly on your side, hold out, you gotta be a gentleman, you gotta take a view from the outside. The rest side of the curve, you guys are kind of the inside. So, yeah, I, I guess, yeah.
I agree, I just feel a little bit, um, I notice it's.
Mr. Chairman, uh, my question was regarding the, the state and the speed limit. Is, is somebody petitioned?
I bet, I bet, I bet no.
Oh, okay.
I, I would.
But you know, somebody had already acted on it.
No, every time you guys mentioned it, I mean, this is literally why we came to these meetings. You know, we got good points and, uh. Right, and, and they weren't expecting a permit tonight. I mean, there's no way, we have, our, our, we have ninety days of warranty, um, so we're gonna be back.
You have more to hear, the hearing can go as long as you need to, essentially, but, yeah.
Well, it's been since two thousand and three, I'm not.
I'm not suggesting you break it up, I'm just saying, there's, we're not putting you under a really tight timetable or anything like that, no.
I, I don't, I would rather have, get it, we.
No other questions?
It's obvious, one more question, are you?
Yes.
Hi, Linda Gorham, Ninety Prospect Street. Mr. Chairman, I have a set two little questions. One, the space that's proposed to be open space, right now, are you a lot of making and walking up in that land? And I'm wondering if the intent is to have access to that, those trails that are up there that connect to other land as part of this development?
Do those trai, is there access from this property to other trails?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to see that, is it over the railroad tracks or adjacent properties?
You can cross the tracks, but it's mostly within the railroad track side.
And are those, are those trails that are on the map or are those sort of?
Probably all trails, all trails on common.
Okay, that's a great point, I'll, I'll look into that, but, um, what we have, you know, in concept now is the upside box in the development and then also some woods trails, um, through the development. So I'll take a look at that, all stra, uh, all trails that we can see.
Yeah, there's one, there's one right here, and there's, yeah, right here, that, by the, there's a little ridge there over this stream that connects it, and there's some trails that that way too.
Yeah, so, uh, we certainly, if we're going to create a trail that's, you know, that, you know, keeps that going.
That'd be great, and I wonder, well, unrelated to that, just, I'm thinking about, uh, affordable housing for, and the other properties, and I'm wondering what the advantages to the community to have affordable housing all like stuck over here in corner versus integrating it into the other development? I'm wondering if there's any research done on the advantages or not for the community?
Well, we're not proposing to put eight units in one spot. So the way we're proposing to deal with it right now is to, um, it comes out of the planning board process, so we'll be talking to them about the affordable units. Uh, when we were there for the pre-application, we had talked about either putting the affordable units scattered around the townhome development, or put them over all together in that smaller pod.
That's what I heard, and I'm right, I, okay.
Okay, so that was one thing that we talked about. What we're proposing now is to locate them in town, locations to be determined and subject to future approval.
Also not part of the development?
Not necessarily, but if we, so normally what the town says is, well, you can't just save all your affordable units for later and build all the ones that you wanna build, you have to, so, once you get to, um, you know, forty units, you need to build an affordable unit. And when you get to sixty units, you need to build a second one. And, and if you don't, you can't continue to build your marketing units. So they'll, we're expecting the planning board's gonna put us on a sequencing schedule. And if we're getting to that point where we have to build an affordable unit and we can't find a location in town to do it, um, then we're gonna have to incorporate it into the townhouse development and that location will be determined by, by one of the boards. And, and it's not just building new units. What, uh, we've done in the past is you find some abandoned or, uh, dilapidated, underutilized properties, you purchase that, rehab it, put the restrictions on it for affordability, and that becomes part of the town's inventory at that point, so, um, there's a few different ways to do it.
Okay, um, I think it's been a great meeting, I think I'm feeling, I'm a little bit further informed.
Just have one last question.
Go for it.
What, what the process was for the zoning request change, uh, from general business to, I guess, it's residential?
Well, so we were, we, when we come to the planning board in twenty seventeen, the approach that I usually take is, come up with a really good project and if the zoning doesn't accommodate it, talk to the town about changing the zoning because why wouldn't you change the zoning to accommodate a project that everyone thinks is a good project? And the planning board basically said, we got a zoning bylaw, we don't wanna talk about changing the zoning, just design something that already applies. And we said, all right, we heard you a lot of clear, so now we're doing this versus something else that we might have proposed if there was some flexibility to change the zoning. So right now, with this project.
It complies with no zoning changes.
Okay, okay.
That's why, that's why it's townhomes and that.
Yes, because townhomes are, exactly, townhomes are not allowed in this residential zone and senior housing's not allowed in the GB zone. So we needed to, that's why we broke it up.
Thank you, thanks.
There's a use table on page six, page six of the, uh, zoning code. And, uh, it's, what they need from us is basically they get a permit for us for the townhouses and they'll get a permit for the senior houses from the planning board. Why we do one and they do the other, I have no idea, but that's the way it is.
So if we change the zoning, it would be less dense, so you talk to them, it's a part of what's due, commercial zoning?
Yeah.
It might not actually, because so, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but so the density that we're proposing there actually complies with the townhome density that the zoning bylaw prescribes for the residential zones where you're also allowed to build townhomes. And what it does, it requires for each unit a certain amount of, of open space or a certain amount of land area that's undeveloped. Um, and so we've met those density requirements. If this were an SRB zone instead of a GB zone, it would look exactly the same. So it's not more density.
What we would have here would just be a planning.
Yeah, maybe it would just be in front of the.
Yeah, so your application says it meets the fifteen thousand, but, which is the SRA. SRB is a twenty-five thousand.
Yes, that's correct, exactly.
Do you meet that?
We don't meet the second one because the way we interpreted this and we discussed it with the planning board, I'm not sure they issued any kind of determination on it. But what we, our view of that issue is the zoning bylaw provides density requirements if you're doing townhome developments in residential zones. It does not provide any specific density requirement with respect to the GB zone. But instead of accommodating, saying there's no density requirement, we can jam in as much as we want, we met the, the lesser of the two densities, the less stringent of the two. That was what we thought was a reasonable approach.
Do you know how close you are to the twenty-five thousand?
I don't think we're very close, actually. No, I mean, it's in the, uh, in that zoning summary table.
Yeah.
We show you that. All right, oh, we have to do the math. So we provide the, uh, with the fifteen thousand requirement per unit, what's required is two hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet of open space. I'm sorry, this is the eight thousand, I'm talking about, I'm sorry. The lot size requirement is the fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, so eight thousand is the open space requirement, okay, lot size requirement fifteen thousand. So what's required is five, um, five hundred and ten thousand square feet and we're proposing six hundred and ninety-four thousand square feet. So we're not that far above the fifteen thousand that I, I don't think, I don't think we'll get close to this one by now.
Okay, yeah.
All right, um, I don't think this is gonna sit with us for a long time, but I do think it is best that, um, we hold off on the link, we have a chance to meet the planning board, uh, how many weeks, two weeks, maybe?
Uh, two weeks.
Now, December fourteenth is the planning board, I mean, I, and we got peer review that is pending. I know that Paul's already sent this stuff off to peer review and typically, I don't know how this town, um, works, but if, if that's a collaborative process, then we'll be working with the planning board and the peer review consultant, and there'll be an exchange of information so that by, hopefully by the time we get back, um, to you and to the, the planning board for the second time, we'll have their comments and responses to their comments. So my suggestion would be for the ZBA to continue this to its first meeting in January. I don't think we need to jam in in December, we got a lot of them to.
We'd be the night after to see the planning board.
Yeah, that's too soon, that's too soon, yeah.
Um, actually, I think that's a really good idea. Do you either want to make a motion to continue this to the January, um, meeting, do you have a date on that Denise?
I do, the meeting is, it's the third Wednesday, so it's, uh, January nineteenth.
I'm looking to continue the, uh, the hearing until January nineteenth.
I'm just checking that option.
I'll make a motion, you're unanimous, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're doing, you wanna put it at six-thirty, right now, obviously, of course.
Yes, at six-thirty.
If I keep it just this, that would be good, I'm not sure that will happen.
Yeah, I'm sure that'll happen.
And just for everybody's knowledge, the planning board meetings are remote meetings. The ZBA is entirely in person, they are still entirely remote. So you'll get notices and it will direct you to look for the link on the town's website for the meeting.
You should be here all by yourselves.
So, uh, that's a good progress. That'd keep you company.
Good, um, and I will try to find these answers for you. And Denise is a critical resource because she's kept in everybody and as we find these answers, uh, she'll be the first to know.
Yeah, and you can, feel free to call the office anytime with questions and whatnot. Stop in with the plans or whatever, you can go over to.
How does the process work in terms of finding out the answers? Do you just contact us or do we come to the meetings to find the answers, like, how does that work?
I would say either come to the meetings or talk to Denise.
Call the office.
Give you a couple leaks and bug you about the, uh, the sewer?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm probably gonna call tomorrow to get that answer because I've heard different things, so I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, and that's an important question for you.
Should we, so we should just call you or should we just give you our emails? We can just send together one email instead of, uh, fifteen voicemails?
I wasn't gonna make fifteen voicemails.
You know what I mean?
You were gonna get it.
You can get it, you're gonna get that.
Well, let's, can I offer, let me offer this to Paul set, cause we're going to the planning board December fourteenth, but we've heard your questions, what, if it makes it easier and coordinated, we can work with Paul and Denise before the fourteenth, and when we come back to that meeting, we will have the answers that we're able to get. And we can present, we'll present them and we can talk about them there. If there's follow-up, we can do it after that meeting. That is not gonna be a one-night hearing for the planning board, that's gonna be at least two.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good one, so you don't have to be all that big. And if they're filming it, you could probably, they give the answer, it's probably.
The, the planning board meetings are, go to meetings, so they're all recorded anyway, so you can watch them on, on the website. But if you, if you haven't, if we haven't gotten the answers back to you by the fourteenth, we'll look for the fourteenth, that's a great idea. And then, so, outstanding questions, you can certainly call and we'll get it done.
Well, it's eight o'clock, it's the latest meeting we've had in ten years.
Sorry, we can't, we're just.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, all in favor, say aye.